And I'll call this regular scheduled meeting of the Cochise County Planning Commission to Order, October 12th, 2022. It's 4:00 PM. If you'd all please rise and give the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm gonna have a roll call. I see we have a couple folks online. Start down as we normally do here. Mr. Pugh, District One?
Present.
Mr. Gregg, that's myself, I'm present. Mr. Montgomery, District One?
I am present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gonzalez, are you online? Okay, Mr. Gonzalez is absent. Mr. Watkins?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Young, are you online?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Marskey?
Here.
Present, thank you. Mr. Saunders, are you online? Saunders is absent. And Ms. Welsh, are you with us today?
Present. Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Welsh. I appreciate that. Before we go on, we do have a commission, or we do, excuse me, a commission. We do have a quorum. And before we get too much further, I'm gonna read a few rules into the record. And that happens to be, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There are a few ground rules. Please turn off your cellphone, or at least silence ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker's information form. Not required for docket applicants. Speakers must use microphone over here, must use microphone over here, to capture comments on the minutes. We do have speaker clocks and have time limits for those. And five minutes for call to the public, ten minutes for applicants, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. Meet the commission. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, at least six from unincorporated areas. The commissioner's service is pro bono. The quorum is five commissioners. A majority passes the motion, a tie vote fails a motion. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals for special use decisions can be made to the Board of Supervisors and filed within fifteen days of the commission's approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained from the secretary tonight, online at the county website, here at the county offices. Other dockets, dockets other than special use request results in recommendations forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice a disagreement with these recommendations, attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing dealing with this docket. Thank you very much. If you folks are online and you have teams, please pay attention to the muting. Sometimes there's background noise and that does interrupt, so be considerate on the rest of this here. Okay. This should be a fairly short meeting this evening. We'll start out with the approval of the previous month's minutes. I'll take a call for a motion on that.
Yes, I will.
Mr. Marskey, thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second.
Mr. Montgomery is second. And do we have any corrections or conversations about the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Mr. Pugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Approved.
Approved. Mr. Gregg votes aye, approval. Mr. Montgomery?
Is aye.
All right. Mr. Gonzalez is absent. Mr. Watkins?
Abstain.
Thank you very much. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Were you present last month?
You're right, I abstain. I was not present the last week.
I'm just keeping you straight, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Marskey?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Saunders is option. Ms. Welsh?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate it very much. Next item is call to the public. And pursuant to ARS 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issues within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners are, may not discuss items that are specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date.
Well, that's not fun.
I know. Do we have anybody that would like to speak as a call to the public? Anybody online? Hearing none, we'll move past that. Okay. Start with a public hearing. Item number one, docket. Hang on a second here. Okay, docket SU 20-22, special use authorization to approve a replacement wireless communications tower of 130 feet and associated equipment. The applicant's name is AT&amp;T Mobility, and Mr. Barrett is representing here, and I do believe he's online. Is that correct?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I appreciate that. At this point, I'll call for the planning director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you saw during the beginning, I had some issues with the slides, so let's hope they work tonight. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we are.
All right. So, parcel size is two acres. The zoning, or the, so the parcel number is 10775020. Zoning is RU4, which is rural, four acres minimum. Central government services are located on the property. This is a fry fire station. It's in growth category D, designated as rural residential. There is no area plan. As stated, it is existing fry fire station with a 141-foot-tall communication tower that is proposed to be removed and replaced with the tower before the commission this evening. So, you should be able to see the aerial photograph of the site. It is located on the corner of Arabian and Tuma, near the Coronado Elementary School. The current tower is located right next to the building, within feet of Tuma Road. The proposed location is moving it a little further back, about 62 feet from Tuma Road. The tower would be about 25 feet from the eastern property boundary. The equipment would be within five feet of that property line. So you can see on the aerial photo, the area where they are proposing it is vacant. The tower will be designed, or is designed to be self collapsing. And the condition will actually be better as far as, should something happen, and it would block Tuma Road. Moving on, this is what is proposed. It's a monopole tower. It will have the wireless carriers' equipment on it, as well as the fry fire station's equipment on it. It does comply with our requirements. For a tower of this size has to have the ability to co-locate at least two users, which it does. They did update their site plan kind of at the last minute. It was updated last week. So the commission should have received copies of that. It was attached to the packet after the agenda went out, though. Here's some photographs of the site. So that top-left photo, that gravel road, the tower will be located to the left there, about 62 feet behind that fence. On the right top, we see the existing tower located near the fire station. Bottom left, that is looking square on the fire station, the existing tower, right there in the corner of Tuma and Arabian. And then on the right side, just kind of looking at the site, the tower will be located north of that building that you see on your screen. The entire area is zoned RU4. This use is allowed, subject to the approval of the special use proposed this evening. Staff reviewed the request, and it does comply with seven factors, including compliance with the newly adopted plans, the zoning district purpose statement, development along major streets, traffic circulation, adequate services and infrastructure, public input. We received none. We did notify all property owners within the radius and received nothing in support or opposition to the request. And then it complies with off-site impacts. Complies with a waiver on one of the factors. So that's the significant development standards. As the commission is aware, these towers are required by code to have a setback that is at least as tall as the tower. The applicant, as I mentioned before, is proposing to have it as close as 62 feet on the north and 25 feet on the east. So the waiver is requested for that approval. Staff does recommend approval of this. We have approved such requests in the past. When they provide documentation, that tower will be self collapsing. And then we do have two factors that are not applicable. That's the hazardous materials and the water conservation. This will be unmanned facility. Factors in favor of the request, the project complies with any criteria used by staff to evaluate special use requests. The proposed use would maintain and expand the range and quality of internet and wireless data coverage in the immediate area. Especially the towers proposed could accommodate additional equipment for other wireless providers in the future. In addition, this will replace an existing tower that is actually taller on the site. We don't find any factors against approval. We did have a discussion, and we'll talk about the conditions a little bit later. We did have some concerns raised that this is located on a fry fire station lot. Previously, in the Hurford area, we did have a wireless company come in and stated they were gonna do a replacement tower, and that tower is actually still out there today. It was not removed, so we do have some conditions, as this is the same underlying landowner, to assure that this tower is removed in the future, and we can discuss that a little bit further. But at this point in time, I will pause, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pugh?
I have one. Robert, there is this tower powered by generator 100% of the time?
No, and I'll let the applicant address that specifically. My understanding is this will hook up to the power grid. All cell towers are being required to install backup generators, depending on whether they're located somewhere deep, so some are propane. But, no, my understanding is the generator will be backup only.
Okay, so there will be grid power to this tower?
That is my understanding. Again, I'll let the applicant qualify that when we get to the end.
Thank you.
Ms. Welsh, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Mr. Young, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirschman. I appreciate it. At this point, we'll call for the applicant's statement. Mr. Barrett, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Barrett, and I'm here representing AT&amp;T Mobility in their request for approval of a special use permit, along with the required variances for the construction of 130-foot monopole. This monopole, as introduced already, is going to be replacing a approximately 140-foot lattice tower operated by the Fry Fire District. The facility will be available for co-location. The existing equipment that's on the lattice tower will be moved over to the new monopole, and the lattice tower will be removed. So essentially, this is... Thank you. So essentially, we see this as basically a co-location. Because after the construction and removal of the lattice tower, there remains one more stealth-like sleek, more sleekly, that's a word, designed pole in the monopole. The base of the pole, there is a 25-foot-by-25-foot fenced-in compound. All of our facilities will be located in that compound, including the fire district's equipment. As also mentioned, there will be some setbacks required. There was a more recent adjustment to the placement of the compound. After discussing it with the fire district in more detail, they wanted to move us further north onto the parcel, away from their training activities on the property. To address the generator question, the generator is there for backup power. The facility will have connection to the grid and also battery, battery bank on site. AT&amp;T is the national provider of first-net services, which is the first responders' network in times of emergencies. And so, generators are being deployed on all facilities when possible to ensure that the first responders have access to the network. For the record, I'd like to submit our application and all the supporting documentation submitted with it. We do have a positive recommendation from the staff, so I don't see a need to go through all the questions that were addressed in the application. If anyone on the board feels the need for that, I can certainly review all those. And in conclusion, we request that the special use application with variances be approved. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. We may have some questions as we go along. At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open, and I'll call for comments from other persons, either in favor or against. I do not have any speaker's forms in front of me. We did have somebody join here recently. I'll ask the question, is there anybody online that would like to comment on this particular docket? Hearing none, we'll continue on. Given the fact that we're no comments, I'm assuming that, Mr. Barrett, you will waive your rebuttal?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I now declare the public hearing closed and call for commission discussion. At this point, we may ask questions of the applicant or staff. Do we have any questions for this applicant or staff? Ms. Welsh?
I do not have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Young?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, we'll call for the planning directory summary and recommendation. Mr. Kirschner, you're on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There you go. I'm having an issue. It will not advance the... It will not advance again. So unfortunately, I don't have the, it does not appear that they are in front of you, so I'm gonna keep, you know, this while we are talking. We do have a recommendation for conditional approval, and if the commission wishes to grant approval, we do have the following non-standard conditions of approval. And those are that the maximum height of the wireless communication facility shall be limited to 830 feet. No signage, other than emergency signage, will be allowed for this wireless communication facility. Facility owner shall notify the county zoning inspector of any proposed frequency changes. The facility owner shall be responsible for maintenance in a manner consistent with the original approval of facility. And equipment cabinets shall display eligible contact number for reporting maintenance problems to the facility owner. The last condition of approval that we did add here this afternoon, after some discussion among staff, commission, the applicant. The applicant, I do not know if he's had a chance to talk by, talk this through with AT&amp;T, but staff feels very strongly that this condition needs to be included. And it states that in conjunction with the permits submitted, the applicant shall provide a cost estimate for removal of the existing tower. The applicant shall post a bond in that amount. Should the tower not be removed within one year of final inspection of a new tower, the county may exercise its rights under that bond to remove the tower. With that, we do have a recommendation for conditional approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. I do have a question for Mr. Barrett, who's still there. Have you seen this last condition, or is, are you comfortable with it and agree to it?
Yes, I've seen it. I have asked leadership at AT&amp;T. It's not an unusual request, so I believe that will be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And at this point, I'll call for the motion. Mr. Chair? Mr. Watkins?
I move to approve docket SU 22-20 Arabian on parcel 10775020. With the conditions of approval recommended by staff, the factors of approval constituting findings in fact.
We have a second, please.
Second.
Second, Mr. Marskey, thank you very much. Mr. Pugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gregg votes in approval, aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Is aye.
Mr. Gonzalez is absent. I apologize. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Marskey?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Welsh?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This is passed with unanimous vote, Mr. Barrett. I do appreciate your understanding and consideration of our concern about wanting the second or the old tower removed. Wish you best of luck, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available tonight with the clerk, or at Monday, or at our offices, Monday through Friday, between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, online at cochise.ez.gov. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Montgomery, you did not remind me to call for discussion of the motion. It's your job. It's just about to do it. You should have done that. Okay, next item on the agenda is docket RZ 22-18 Babakomari. County initiated the request to rezone 21 parcels located in the Babakomari from R36 residential, one dwelling per 36,000 square feet to, I should say, and RU2, RU1 dwelling for two acres to RU4, RU1 dwelling for four acres. At this point, this is the county initiated, and Mr. Coxworth is going to be the one representing it. I'll call for your presentation, sir, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get my...
Take your time. I can't beat my last month's minutes, so time frame.
So as the, most of the commissioners are aware, the, there have been a number of requests to rezone properties in the Babakomari back to RU4 to remove a condition placed on the property when the property was upzoned to either SR8, or R36, or RU2. Dockets have been fairly slow. We decided to reach out to the property owners of the 37 properties that are remaining, offering them the opportunity to participate in this county-initiated request to revert their zoning back to RU4, thereby removing the condition requiring the, requiring a subdivision plot.
Your time is up.
Babakomari is located just north of Lightyear City, near the Whetstone area. This is a map of the 21 parcels that are participating in this rezoning to RU4. I did receive two noes from this property owner, it's about 300 acres, and this property owner, who may be interested in selling to this property owner, so we heard from most property owners, but the remaining property owners that are not highlighted in blue and are not already in the hatched area, which is already RU4, such as these parcels, we did, we did send them a letter, two letters, I believe, and we have not heard back from them. So if they desire to develop the property, they'll either need to submit a subdivision plot and go through that process, or apply for a rezoning and pay the associated fee. I don't have much else to talk about. Obviously, staff does recommend approval of this, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. So I just heard you say, we didn't catch everybody, or if we did catch everybody, some weren't interested. Basically, the, got the big 300 acres down below, but that's that line right across, yes, right up and down there. They said, they just did not respond.
They just did not respond. I did, we did actively try to communicate with all the property owners. By doing that, we did grab a few more. Some of the properties are owned by home builders in town, and they were just busy and lost the letter, so I reached out by phone.
Okay.
Sometimes they knew of the other property owners who were interested, but those who we did not reach by mail, we did proactively try to reach them by phone to let them know that this is going on. And this is what we're, what we're left with. So 21 out of 37.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm assuming that some of them are wanting to keep the zoning as it is, so if they did break it up, they can break it up as they want.
Yeah, those along the highway, well, they're not right on the highway, but just off the highway there. And this is, I'm not sure what the property ownership of these floor or this piece here. Sure, that's definitely developable with a subdivision plot.
Right.
And they might want to keep that option because their zoning is R36, which is less than one acre lot, so.
Right. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Coxworth? All right. This person, I'm gonna read through here. I've already had the applicant's statements. We're gonna declare the public hearing open. Call for comments from other persons, either in favor or against. Is there anybody online who would like to speak to this docket? Hearing none, I'll move on. This applicant's rebuttal is unnecessary. I don't even gonna, I'm not even gonna ask if he wants to refuse it or deny it, so declare a public hearing closed at this point. Call for the commission's discussions. Do we have any questions for Mr. Coxworth, once again?
I, possibly.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, you did mention several methods of contacting people, and you use them all till you get response, or?
Yeah, we did our best. I mean, I think we're mostly obligated to just let them know this is going on. They were required to return to us a notarized signature, authorizing us to go through this action. I should have included that in the packet, but I didn't.
So in any case, a very legitimate effort's been made to contact everybody.
We did our best. Sometimes it's hard for people to believe that the government is doing them a favor, but we sometimes convince them of that. Because rezoning is $500 plus $15 an acre. Got 100, you know, acre piece of property, it's another 1,500, you know, it's almost $2,000.
So regarding that, in response to the chairman's question, if someone is not contacted, they, for some reason they're not, what are their options to come back here?
Like the previous property owners prior to this action, they will be required to file an application and submit the fee, and staff will go through the work of evaluating the downzoning, which none of them have been denied, and then come before you, and then get final approval from the Board of Supervisors, just like any other rezoning.
I appreciate the multiple methods to contact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Any other questions for Mr. Coxworth? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. And, Mr. Montgomery, or Ms. Marskey, I apologize.
I move to recommend approval of the Board of Supervisors for the rezoning of docket RZ 22-18. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings in fact.
Thank you, Mr. Marskey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Pugh. All righty, I'm gonna get it this time. At this point, do we have any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Mr. Pugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Gregg votes aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Votes aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Marskey?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Marskey. And Ms. Welsh?
Aye.
Thank you. It is unanimous. This, this action will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval. Any person who's not agreeing with this should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with the docket. All righty. Having that one done. Next item on the agenda. Planning Director's Report, including pending and recent and future agenda items and the Board of Supervisors' actions. Mr. Coxworth?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we will have a meeting on November 9. There are two staff-initiated requests to update the zoning regulations for Wind Energy Power Plant and Solar Energy Power Plant. There is a rezoning in the Sierra Vista area from SR12 to GB. It's essentially just cleaning up the zoning line. There's a zoning line that crosses a piece of property, especially used for guest lodging. I believe it's a campground. And then Mr. Kirschman is processing a rezoning to GB for a gas station in the St. David area. Mr. Montgomery asked that I provide an update or just provide a report concerning the shipping containers located along Highway 90 in the Babakomari area. This is Uh, this is a state project to fill in the gaps on the border wall. Um. We did, we were notified kind of after to the fact, after grading was going on on the site, uh, they were required to get a grading permit, but they were not required to get any type of temporary use permit from the department because it's considered essential government services since it is a state government-sponsored activity. We did the same thing for when they were building the, for the federal government, when they were building the border wall, the storage of their materials for that activity was considered, um, as part of the project and therefore deemed essential government services, and therefore they don't have to get a use permit from development services, but they are subject to all other regulations such as floodplain and, uh, which they're not in the floodplain, but, or a, uh, clearing permit, which they were required to get, so they are in compliance. There was a recent article in the newspaper. I hope that helped clarify some of the confusion out there, what was going on and what those storage containers were going to be used for.
Did, uh, and this is be very sarcastic. I, thank you for that comment, but did it, did it happen to indicate where they're going to put those containers?
Um, I wasn't able to find out, uh, where they're putting them. I know there's a gap near the Chiracola Monument, only because I saw the article in the New York Times, so I imagine it's going to be those type of areas. Um, three hundred containers is quite a bit, quite a few. Um, and I, I don't know where the gaps are to be filled. I couldn't find that out. But I assume they're spending a lot of money doing this. I assume they are going into gaps somewhere along, and hopefully it, it will, uh, it will, um, plug those holes, so to speak. I know the board patrol, at least on my drive home, they're pretty busy. These guys are pretty active. They are.
Thank you very much. Are there anything else that you have to add? Is there anything else? Apologize. That's good. Robert, do you have anything to add?
I do. Uh, thank you, Dan, Mr. Chairman. Uh, at next month's meeting, we also have a special use for a small guest lodging, um, out in the Sun sights area. The two tents and a, uh, cargo container, uh, rental. And then the December meeting, um, we will be having a, uh, communication tower for, uh, the Code of Prove in the Mezzal area. That's all that I have to say.
That's, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, I'll call, uh, have, passing on to the next item, it's called to the commissions on any recent matters. Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak on? Hearing none. At this point, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for everybody coming in.